Good evening, welcome to the Medfield School Committee meeting of Monday, March 16th. We've been in executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining and pending litigation. We have a fairly full agenda tonight. We are, I think, on a table the February 3rd minutes because Eileen is the... Is Eileen the recording? Oh, you're the recording secretary.
I'm the recording secretary, right, and I've...
Then we'll come back to you and we'll do that, okay. New budget, we're gonna discuss the budget mailer. If it's all right with committee, I'm gonna move that down on the agenda because we have several presentations from high schoolers who I'm sure have more homework to do and don't wanna hang around here about the budget mailer, so we'll take those up. A report from those who went on the Dominican Republic trip, I think had, like everything else this year, some difficulties with the weather, although once they got there, I suspect it was better than here. Several high school trip requests for next school year. High school senior project requests, which is a new item for us, and we'll approve some donations. Then we have small business, we'll revisit the FY16 capital and operating budgets and have a report from the superintendent followed by public input. So, if it's all right with committee, we'll move that budget mailer down and we'll move the minutes down too just to the end of new business and take up the high schoolers first.
Good evening, happy spring. I'm very excited to introduce a couple of our students who are here. So, about a year and a half ago, I was here and I proposed a trip to the Dominican Republic, which, as you'll hear, is very different from some of our other trips, which we'll hear later on tonight, which are really language-based. This was a community service trip focused on environmental science. So, we had an overwhelming number of students who wanted to go on the trip. We ended up sending a total of about twenty, was it twenty-eight? With Westwood?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven with Westwood High School. They went during February break, did have some weather issues, but they were able to get out. So, they're here tonight to share their experience of what that trip was like. So, again, I wanna thank you for your support in this trip and talking to a number of the students who are here as well that went on the trip. It was something that they'll always remember and had a great experience with. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Grace there and Elliot Jackson. They were on the trip and they're gonna share some of what they experienced while they were down in the Dominican in February.
We're here to present on the culture of the Dominican Republic as part of a We Share college credit program.
There is a program through the company we travel with called Education First, where you could earn up to five college credits doing a project based on your trip and how you learned about their culture and stuff, so Elliot and I partnered up and this is our We Share project.
Monday was the day when we traveled and this was supposed to be Sunday, but unfortunately because of the snow, we got pushed back, which we were just happy we were able to go.
Yeah.
So, we took like a three-hour bus ride to the airport and then the trip, or the group that left first, I think, on the 7:15 flight, which was Grace, they got in about 11:30 to Santiago and I was stuck at the air... Santiago, sorry, my apologies. And I was stuck in the airport for about eight hours or something like that, waiting for the last flight, which got in around 3:00 in the morning, so I was thrilled the next day.
I was just glad we gotta go, because if we'd gone out of Logan, we wouldn't have gotten out till Friday.
Yeah, I mean, it was good. We kinda got to meet the Westwood kids a little bit more, like, and kinda get to know them a little bit better, so I mean, it was almost good in a way to spend time with them.
This is where we flew into, Santo Domingo, just for relevance. This is the Dominican Republic, so for relevance, that's where we flew in. This is about our money slide, so basically one US dollar is about forty-two and a half pesos was the factor like Monday when we left, so that's kinda what we ended up with for the whole trip.
Kinda changed frequently while we were there, we noticed. Conveniently to the shopkeeper's benefit.
That's true. A lot of places would take US money, no problem, because at this point pesos just kept going up and they were willing to take any US money they could.
Yeah, America's a lot more stable and there's not many countries that don't take it and I think the Dominican Republic was no exception. And yeah, there was only really two places, I think, that didn't take American dollars, which was like the really, really small stores and then the supermarket. The supermarket we went to before we went to the airport, before we left, for some reason, they only took pesos, which, that's right, there was a currency exchange shop right about late in the center too, so it wasn't that bad.
Tuesday was our first day all together in Santo Domingo. They let us get up a little bit later than planned, let us sleep in for the kids who got in at like 3:00 in the morning, which was like everybody here except for Elliot and me. Yeah, alright, so that was late and we got up, we took a walking tour of Santo Domingo. We went out to lunch somewhere and had to change buses because our bus wasn't big enough to fit all of us, including Westwood. And then we took a humongous bus ride up to Arboqua and stopped by the hotel that we stayed at for the whole week pretty much. And went back up to the environmental school and they introduced themselves and we got to just see where it was, see their location, weren't a little bit about what we were doing all week.
Seeing the city was really nice. I think our tour guide's name was Manuel, if I remember correctly. Yeah, Manuel. Yeah, and he was really good, you know, he kinda taught us like a little bit of the history about the place. We had to see a lot of the old buildings there. They kinda kept all the ruins around, which I thought was kinda cool.
The first hospital.
Yeah, like there was like the first hospital built in the Americas there, which I thought was kinda cool. So, it's a Spanish city, like, you know, it's similar to what you'd see in like Spain, because it was Spanish. And it's in the middle of a transition right now, I'd say, between like the past life of the city into the modern life of the city. They didn't really have too many sewers around, because they didn't really have those. There's kinda like gutters on the side of the street that took all the rainwater away, but there's a lot of new streets being built. We saw a lot of that while we were there. It's like a lot of infrastructure being built. It was interesting city, actually.
These are pictures, you should go pretty fast. This is Medfield Kids in Santo Domingo on maybe like, I don't know, pretty close to our hotel.
River in the background, I think.
Yeah, more of the older buildings.
Yeah, it's all packed very close together. It's a lot of space. This is the hospital, I think, right, yeah, so not really much left. There's a couple earthquakes and I think a fire too, so...
Couple floors. That's fine. More, this... Alright, we gotta go around a museum for a second.
Was that the museum or was that the monument?
I think it was the outside.
Was that the... Alright, that was the museum. I know there's a place where they buried a lot of their like, their famous like war heroes or like political heroes and Caesar made a joke that he was gonna be buried there.
He's always our tour guide, quite a character. There's a couple of pictures of Cesar later on, but he was really, really good.
Yeah.
More tour pics.
That was on the river too, I think, from our transportation.
Alright, so there's a lot of older cars, mopeds, lots of mopeds, motorbikes.
Most are mopeds.
No helmets.
Yeah, no helmets, like five people on a moped at a time. That was pretty standard.
A lot of people. But we talked about how expensive gas was, about five dollars-ish a gallon.
I think it was a little bit more than five dollars, especially when you convert it from liters to... They did liters.
Roughly. It was a lot.
Obviously, it's in islands. They have to import basically everything, so everything is pretty expensive there.
Just gas stations were really common. I was surprised that that was the most common thing that we saw. Did you pay attention?
You guys go on the same trip?
There was a gas station, I thought it was a gas station. I love gas stations.
I'll take you. This is like cruise ship. Obviously tourism is probably their biggest industry there, because you know, nice beautiful island in February, people's not gonna wanna go.
Part of our, the purpose of our tour was like ecotourism, so go for it. So, the end of Tuesday, we traveled up to Arboqua, so bus ride.
It's in the mountains too.
Very nice, all the way up here, more like here-ish.
Yeah, there weren't that many highways. It was all kinda back roads, which made all the traveling a little bit longer than I think it really needed to be.
Yes.
But not a lot of interstate systems there.
This is my favorite slide.
That's Dominican time. So, there's some sort of time dilation that happens on islands that you get to notice a lot if you ever traveled to. Five minutes in America is five minutes, but five minutes there could mean up to two days, so...
Final hometown, Nicole and I tell you.
I think one of the highlights was that we thought we had made this thing up. Like, we'd say to each other, "Oh, so two-hour ride, so that means a five-hour ride." And then at one point, we heard the tour guide say something to some of the people who were kind enough to lunch for us, like, "Oh, they're like, it'll be about 10 minutes." And he was like, "Oh, Dominican time?"
And we were like, "What? Cesar, you know us." It's real. Yeah, so that was nice. A three-hour bus ride to the beach actually meant like six. That was just very common. You gotta like not listen to their timing.
Yeah, the bus ride to the beach was, it was grueling.
It was interesting. So, this is live, you're going. Wednesday was our first workday. We woke up in the hotel in Arboqua, it was pretty nice, yeah. Drove to the environmental school.
Hotel in Arboqua was really nice. We weren't exactly slumming it while we were there. That was luxury.
Now, when you came in here, it's all about environmental science, for me, you know.
We're getting the work. So, the environmental school that we helped out at a lot is kind of a university, college. It's a higher level education where...
It's quite small though, like forty-two students, was it? Something around there. I thought it was forty-two.
That's probably right. Way up in the mountains, very small. They do everything that they need for them. They've got greenhouses, all this stuff, and their goal is to promote the environment and everything that they do.
So, obviously during their industrial expansion, a lot of the forest on the island was cut down, so they're trying to replant that, get that back, and the first step is to educate children.
Yeah.
And building path is kinda cool.
Almost there. Let's go one more. There you go.
Alright, so we cut some bamboo down in the forest, which I thought was very...
Awesome.
It's a very interesting choice for environmental service, was to cut down trees. And then we used them to make this path, which was covered in mulch. We planted flowers on the side too. Yeah, next one. This is what it looked like, more or less finished. Can't really see them, there's flowers down here and it's...
So, this was the whole path. Yeah, there's all the flowers here. The goal is this, for them to use it as sort of like a classroom experience and for other people that come in to use this like path and take them into the forest.
I think they said they were building some sort of aquatic attraction there, like to display like aquatic wildlife.
We also replanted, we cut up the bamboo into sections and we used it to hold the outlining in place and apparently that's gonna regrow.
All the bamboo that's planted here is usually four at every intersection of two other pieces of bamboo and that'll grow into more bamboo trees, which I'm sure will...
How long is the path like? I mean, in general, how long did it?
It was a hike by the time we were done.
I think it was like...
We cut down a lot of bamboo.
A bit less than like half a kilometer.
Maybe a half mile, maybe more, maybe more.
Like a mile?
I think we stopped at that point.
It was like a half kilometer, I think, probably was.
Yeah, they do measure town.
Yeah.
After a while, we couldn't go anymore, because they went straight down a hill.
Like literally straight down, like ninety degrees slopes.
Well, they got off the steps and when they were done, that was actually really cool how they did those too. They built it out of bamboo. I just thought it was really neat.
Plus, they were telling us that another school was gonna add on to that path and another school had been built in before, so it's kinda cool that we're like part of something that's like being grown.
Yeah. Can I interject just one second here? So, I just wanna say, that particular day when we built that path, because we were a day delayed because of Blizzard Neptune, HEB, twenty-something, whatever.
Sixty-four.
We had to do it all in one day. Originally, they had planned for us to do a half one day and, you know, the other part of the job. What was amazing to me was, there was a group of students, twenty-seven of them, didn't really know each other, never met the various students, or probably were maybe ten or thirteen students from the school. Huge language barrier, so there was a lot of hand gestures and like attempts at various words.
Especially hand gestures.
And I think it was five hours or six hours, did that whole path. Chopped down all the bamboo trees, highly sustainable, put all, you know, dug all the post holes. What was it, eighty-eight degrees, humid, mosquitoes everywhere, covered in bug spray and suntan lotion and long pants and, you know, the sweat just pouring down. And they never stopped. Not once did I ever have to say to them, "Get up, keep moving, keep going," nothing. It was me who sucked in the water, looking for the water. So, they worked really hard. I could not have been more proud of them on that particular day. They really pulled it together and it was amazing to watch in one day what about thirty-five to forty people could accomplish. It was pretty phenomenal.
It was nice.
For, I know I can speak, I think I can speak for most of us here, where we didn't want to stop. It wasn't something where we were getting tired, we were getting lazy, we wanted to like sit down. We could see our progress and it was like, it was rapid how quickly this path was coming up and it was looking really nice, so none of us wanted to stop. We just wanted to get it done. So, it wasn't like it was torture or anything. We weren't sweating and having a really awful time. It was fun. We were talking like to the students. Some of us spoke Spanish and we could like communicate with the students, which was really, that was really fun.
It was ten thousand percent easier if you speak Spanish. So much easier.
But there were people who were digging, I mean, literally digging holes. The post, if you've ever put a fence in, digging the post holes and digging all the holes for the plant. So, some of my big gun guys, like they'll, you know, were, you know, and Zach and some of the other guys were wheelbarrows full of all the mulch, which was extremely heavy down these paths, you know, it was, nothing's paved, you know, yeah, it was hard work.
It was nice too, because it would've taken these students at this environmental school so long. I don't even wanna know how long to do this on your own.
I think Caesar said we did like two days' worth of work in one, but I'm not sure if I buy that, but we'll see.
I'm not sure if I buy that.
Was that Dominican two days or?
That's a real question.
Alright, real quick on clothing. EF kinda warned us about what we wore would really be like noticeable.
Westwood took no heed to this notice.
Yeah, Westwood did not care, shorts, tank tops, full nine yards. There was a time and place for that and...
I think they kinda regretted it when it came to the bug bites. I mean, they got eaten. We didn't get eaten as much, which is good.
And I think they were jealous of our guys. The first day, they might've came, we came in and they're like, "Ooh, like, no chance." And the second day, when they had bug bites, like, aw, we were like, "Hey, sorry."
It wasn't like, "Oh, you got a bug bite and it itches?"
Nah.
It looks like welts the first day. It doesn't itch till like three days later. And then itches so much and then it looks like chicken pox.
About thirty days.
Like, it's not normal bug bites. Yeah, and then there were the bleeding bug bites that fled like on the spot.
So, this is also a culture.
Make no mistake, like thirty-five percent deep, you're gonna wanna be above that. That's like lowest I've ever been.
We want the toxic stuff.
There was a culture for people who wore shorts sometimes and a culture for people who were taken seriously. So, I don't know. We were lucky, we wore long pants a couple of times.
Yeah, no one in the Dominican was wearing shorts. Everyone was wearing like pants.
I mean, if they had shorts, they were like, "Brew you the shorts, long ones, alright, give me a bunch more."
It wasn't really like, we didn't really get that like hot necessarily, because we were up in the mountains. It was like cool breeze going, so it wasn't really that bad.
Alright, trash real quick. Elliot, Karen already touched on, there's no trash.
No sewage, no real huge infrastructure for sewage there, which is kind of a problem.
Yeah, partly why they went down there, we're gone.
Poverty.
We saw a lot of stuff you don't see here in Medfield. It was very interesting that, you know, people can live in very nice houses right next to people who don't have electricity or anything. We actually, on our drive to the beach, drove through a couple planes that were just completely flooded from the rain the day before.
It's like miles and miles of flooded land and these people whose houses were just absolutely ruined by these floods.
Sitting on their roofs.
Like a flood of water.
Yeah, you look at the house, they're like down a hill and the door, like the frame of the door, there's just like two feet of water and you can see like into the house and it's completely flipped. The entire house has two feet of water in it and it was just like, you wouldn't even... It's something you would see in the news and just like not even believe it and seeing it firsthand was very shocking.
Well, and it's nothing new for them either. We also saw all of the animals that they heard, such as like cattle and sheep. They would all be stranded on little patches of land and they couldn't do anything about it, because it happens all the time for them, especially rainy season. Like, this wasn't even the rainy season.
This is like one day in rain. Happy year, Slade.
One thing, I didn't see that many people in the streets. I saw a lot of like the slums and like, kinda saw more... Or the housing, but you didn't see much.
Like the cheap sunglasses salesman and like things I sort of see in like some alleyways in New York City. That was really, that was really common. Like, they sold like some of those prayer beads, what are those called? Ms. Blom's telling me to hurry up, so...
Thursday, we started in a greenhouse, that's about the environmental school, this is working. Then we went out to barbecue, which was awesome.
In a river.
In a river.
That was really awesome, actually.
At the environmental school also, Miss Slade, is, oh, then we went on a waterfall hike.
It was a hike. It was like upstairs in a bridge, so it wasn't really a hike.
I think it's called a hike, it's fine. Alright, then we got to go to Arboqua Public School. Is it just public school? Because it was like elementary and high school, I'm like, alright, I wasn't sure that actually made for it.
They have like same length periods that we do, but it's, they don't have as many in a day that we do. They have more like half-days of school and then it's like middle school and elementary school during the morning and then high school in the afternoon.
It pretty much would be like a classroom if you, everything is all natural light, always have... They have roofs, but completely open to the outside, so much big natural sunshine stuff. That's a leather picture. That's us in a classroom. You really can't see these.
Cesar right there.
Cesar, alright, keep going.
Only chalkboards.
Yes.
Yeah, only chalkboards, yeah, no whiteboards.
They have a garden where they teach students how to plant whatever they want and then they get to take this home, plant it at home, that kinda stuff. We got to take a picture of all the kids there and then...
Played volleyball.
We played volleyball with them for a while.
They destroyed us.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, they actually destroyed us.
That was embarrassing. Alright, next one. Then we had karaoke night at the hotel.
Oh, jeez.
Of course.
Lovely. I'm not sure what you guys were saying there, but it's nice. We are in Medfield this weekend. Everybody's so funny. We ate a lot of food.
Yeah, I disagree with what she says. She says that snacks aren't really part of their culture. I'm gonna disagree with her.
We never really ate snacks and they only brought us snacks.
We've never even ate snacks, we eat like every now and then.
But it was because, but it was because like they thought that we ate snacks.
How hilarious.
Snacks at home. We don't need food, like, stop.
We were never hungry on this trip, that's for sure.
Yeah, I don't think there was one time during the trip I was hungry, no. There was like so many times I was full, but like I wasn't hungry.
But we kept eating, because it was so...
Kept eating, because they were just handing us fruit, we were like, awesome.
Did you guys like the food?
It was so good.
There is a lot of, what did I put? Chicken, rice?
Yeah, it was chicken, rice and beans like every different way, but it was really good.
And fruit, every kind of fruit.
Lots of fruit, yeah.
Lots of mangoes.
Everything's fresh.
Mangoes, apples.
Nothing pineapple.
Nothing with pineapple.
Ms. Testa, the Westwood chaperone, took a bunch of different pictures of our food that we ate, so I threw that on there. There's like rice, chicken, everything.
Rice, rice, chicken, vegetables, pretty much every single day, but it was really good and different each time.
Yeah. Alright, Friday, real quick, actually the best day of my life, I don't know about you guys. We woke up, it's absolutely pouring, it's a wash, absolutely pouring, just going, we'll explain it as we go.
Yeah, it's rain days. They, we have snow days, they have rain days. Painted some trash barrels.
So, we went up to this village, I'm not ever sure that we knew the name of it.
Matalborda.
I'm not gonna try to say that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay?
So, it's Spanish. Matalborda, thank you, much better.
Thanks. Alright, so we went there to paint trash cans. They're very old chemical, like industrial chemical bins.
Like oil drums.
Yeah, so we had to wear face masks, gloves.
And it was funny, because they were shipped in from Massachusetts.
So, point of... The point of painting these was to promote using trash cans. If there are colorful trash cans everywhere, the goal is to like actually put trash in them rather than just...
I mean, there kinda was a lot of trash everywhere in the city and the towns, so I mean, it was more prevalent than you'd hope. More trash cans.
Still pouring. Mark and Nicole and I grabbed some kids who were home because rain days, because they couldn't watch school, grabbed some kids, ran outside and then pretty soon everybody was outside, just like playing in the rain, having like a blast.
Although some kids found buckets and filled it with water and that's, that's when the fun started.
Ms., alright, next one. Us playing in the rain, some more. Look at us, Eileen, yay! Alright, next one. My favorite picture of Emily, yay! Keep going. Real quick, a lot of places had electricity. There is no running water. If there was, you can't drink it. Even locals didn't drink the running water.
Even they couldn't drink the water, it was heavily toxic.
Elliot and London are insane. They brush their teeth with tap water.
Cesar told us we could, so we did.
We're alive, so I didn't.
I'm alright.
I did not recommend that. Did you take typhoid stuff?
No, I didn't take typhoid stuff. I was in one trip that didn't take anything, I think, so that's...
We all took typhoid and malaria pills. Elliot over here's with tank, and me too.
Candy is cholera in the water.
Cholera.
I didn't read anything about that.
I think CDC says typhoid on this list of things to get.
That's interesting. Alright, keep going. Don't get me making bad. Then we went whitewater rafting that afternoon. It's still pouring at this point.
We drove there for like half an hour in open top transport.
I have to say, the best analogy for this, you all know that moment in Saving Private Ryan in the very beginning, where they're all right next to each other and they've got helmets on, it's pouring, right? That's what this felt like, in all the best of ways, but it was very intense.
It may have been raining, but I think that honestly made it more entertaining.
Yes.
I don't think that day we ever dried off.
No.
Constantly wet. It was fun.
Ms. Blom, looking good.
Back to the trash thing really quick. I saw a lot of trash in the water too.
In the water, yeah. Alright, so Friday night, this is at the environmental school, had a huge dance party for us, which was awesome. We went dancing. It started off like they would ask us to dance, by then we were just dancing with everybody.
They were trying to teach us some of their dances, like the merengue and the chata. I think there was one more too. I can't remember the name, but...
Nobody got the hang of that one.
Yeah, nobody got that one.
You can go to that one. There's Elliot and I. Woo!
More dancing.
Emily and Cesar. They asked us to teach them an American dance and Nicole and I were like, "I'm not a American dancer." So, we ended up putting on the Cuban shambles, because that's pretty easy. This thing tells you what to do in the song. They had a blast. They were jamming out to that for a while. And then we played some Simon Says in Spanish, they kept trying to trick us, we all failed.
And then we did stretches with them too afterwards, calisthenics.
Saturday, we were supposed to go to the beach. Still raining, tropical storm, didn't go. Ended up Dominican time, three hours, to some other beach.
Yeah, we were easily begging for forty-five minutes at a restaurant to drive us to the other side of the island, go to the beach, and it finally worked.
It was fine. We, Cesar told us that we could stop by like this little mall. I don't, would you call it a mall, market?
It's like, it was like a tourist mall. It was like...
A market, a tourist, it did work. But it was really fun. We got to walk around for about an hour, look at stuff. A couple people got like paintings.
Knockoff re-bands.
We had to bargain in Spanish. I know Kayla and I used to learn Spanish and that was like so much fun, like actually, putting in the real world, like using what we liked, like some great, it was really fun.
That was cool. I was trying to take Spanish this year. That was us at the beach we finally got to. We weren't in a lot much farther than that, because rip tides and...
Couple of lungs got sucked in, but it was alright.
Nicole almost died.
It was scary, but I was still scared, so...
This is why we get insurance on ships.
Alright, water was really nice.
Yeah, the water was a lot warmer than the air, I think. It was...
We were only there for about an hour, but it was worth it. We got to go to a beach in the Dominican.
I got to play with dogs.
Yes, lots of stray dogs.
There's lots of stray dogs everywhere. I don't really, they don't really understand why you wanna touch them.
Because they're Dominican, so it's fun.
Cool, man, it's like, alright. Sunday, we got to sleep in again, because by the time we got back to the hotel in Santiago, I think we ate dinner at 11:30?
We did.
Yeah, so that was fun.
It was carnival while we were there, which was awesome.
Awesome.
Yeah, could go obviously, but...
I'm sure Cesar did.
Yeah, we did Cesar one.
Sunday morning, Mr. Murphy took us on a little walking tour and this monument you can see, and then that's us, and this monument.
And city in the background, it's beautiful, surrounded by mountains. It's absolutely breathtaking. I think that was the highest point of the city, was that monument. It's on this hill, nice little statue. It's a statue of heroes, celebrated La Resta Resyon, which is their civil war with Haiti.
So, just another reference, this is Arboqua, this is Santiago. We were supposed to go to this beach. I have actually no idea where the beach of Medfield was.
Where do we end up going at the end?
Probably close to the Rios del Sol.
Rios del Sol.
Awesome, so we drove to like here that day and then back, and that's there where we flew out of, Sunday afternoon. And that's just where we shared. Do you guys have any questions?
What was the biggest thing that you took out of the trip?
That... Lots of...
Just like, I think just the experience. I mean, like, we've all gone on like trips before, I mean, assume. Just from Medfield, but I mean, this is like kinda the first time like without our parents there, you know? I mean, we were still with the school and everything, but it was like, it was a little bit more self-regulated, I think. And then obviously the next step was going off to college and like being completely self-regulated.
I think another big thing that I remember noticing, when we were first driving out to Arboqua, we noticed a lot of villages and I remember seeing a lot of kids playing outside and it just struck me, like, no one really does that around here. We sit around, we play on our phones, we say like how bored we are and we don't take advantage of all the great things that we have. And then the day when we were playing with the kids in the rain, they were just so excited to just jump in puddles with us and it was easily the best day that we had. We had so much fun running around with them and, you know, even buckets of ice cold water from god knows where, like, it was the best day. Like, I don't know, we just, we felt really great to just be really experiencing the moment and having fun with these kids and seeing how they just found... and seeing how um, they just found ways to still be so happy when they didn't have nearly as much as we did. And I think that was a big takeaway.
Yeah, we were never bored, we were, we were always busy, we were always doing something that was forgettive. And it was nice to see, you know, like other places where obviously much different from ours, where, I mean, things still work just as smoothly, everything happened. It was nice to know that that could still happen here and just like, it kinda changed my perspective on that stuff.
For some of us, I think also it was using our Spanish, because we really, we've never had, unless you went on the Spain trip, I know you went on the Spain trip, I've never had an opportunity to use my Spanish, Spanish as much as I did. And that was just, it was, it made the past five years of taking Spanish really pay off. Because I've been like, I, I do not like enjoy like the grammar tests we do in Spanish, like it just, it doesn't seem like there's a point to it always. But having gone, I was so happy I would check Spanish and using that and being able to communicate and talk with people, that was really, really amazing for me. But then also what Nicole said about how people have so much less than us, yet they're so much happier, is kind of those two for me.
It's interesting to see that, they kinda have like a different dialect from the Spanish, Spanish we speak, because we learned like Spain, Spanish, but they spoke obviously like Dominican Spanish, just like we speak American English, and it was kinda cool to see that too.
Are you all in the environmental science curriculum? You all involved?
I don't.
I take environmental science.
So did everybody in the environmental science class end up going or no? No?
No. I think it was mostly non-environmental science.
Interesting, okay.
So if we do this in the future, what advice would you give students that go next year or the year after?
Really strong box spray.
Just change your clothes everywhere.
Um, definitely, um, I wouldn't make it a requirement or anything, but having Spanish is definitely really helpful. Um, there were points where I, Nicole and somebody else was chatting away and I was just standing there like taking in every third word. I mean, I got the gist of it, but it would have been nice, especially if they weren't in Spanish, like have an option to like brush up on their Spanish.
Also, the teacher from Westwood was a Spanish teacher, so that was really helpful for us also. Because then, it's not like we were ever in a situation where we couldn't manage, like she could speak to everyone, so that was really helpful.
I would say other advice would include just stay open-minded, you know, like our plane was delayed a day and um, yes, there were times we got in at three AM and there were plenty of times that maybe things didn't go exactly as planned, but as long as you're able to roll with it, everyone had a great time and it was a fantastic experience for everyone. So as long as you're willing to um, just go with the flow when it comes to this, then
If you bring like long pants, I That's more important than you would think it is, like, and sunscreen too, I mean, we didn't really need it because it was either cloudy or it was like, you were in the shade. But it's uh, sunscreen's definitely important too, especially if you're really fair-skinned.
I got burnt last day. Miss Blum, did you have anything to recommend for next year?
Um, I, I would just say that definitely I noticed having the long pants was a huge asset, um, and good box spray. And they, and they were, they were very flexible and well-prepared, and that made a huge difference for them. And it's what made the trip so nice. Uh, they were well-behaved, they listened, they went with the flow, you know, they were great. I mean, it really helped make the whole trip.
We definitely like do have to thank Mrs. Blum for like pushing pants on us so much.
I'm like, you're kidding me, I'm not wearing pants.
But it was like the best decision was pants.
And I will say that, I knew that because when I went down for training back in November, I, that was, that was key. The fact that I went down for training, EF took me down there for that, and I learned a lot, the Dominican time. Uh, a, a, a lot about the culture, which helped me prepare them, which is I think allowed them to be able to roll with it.
I would definitely recommend you guys do this trip next year, or something similar to this, doesn't
It's life-changing.
Yes, it doesn't have to be in the same place, doesn't have to be any of that kind of stuff, but this service trip was awesome.
Yeah, I thought it was great because I don't, um, I haven't taken a language until now, I stopped uh taking Latin this year. And to be able to go on a trip out of the country without having to be in a, a language class is really nice.
Good, please, thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Great presentation.
Welcome all.
Yeah.
And I wanna thank, uh, so Kevin Murphy and Cynthia Blum, um, also, as you know, chaperone the trip, so. As I told them, it's an, it's an awesome responsibility to take students away, and um, they were just, they were great. And the feedback that we got back from, uh, from EF, I followed up with them shortly thereafter, they were thrilled with uh both um Cynthia and Kevin and just again, were glowing in regard to how our kids did there, so, well done. And it's interesting that they mentioned the language, because as you know, most of our trips, it's a great segue, most of our trips that we take here are language-based trips. This was very different, and I remember when we presented this trip to the students, um, we were, we were focusing on the fact that this isn't a sort of museum type of trip, which is very common for what we typically do, this was sort of roll your sleeves up, um, and do some work. And um, it was very interesting to see the, the mix of students come together for this trip. So uh, Cynthia and I are talking already about something the next year or two, um, whether it's back there or somewhere else, but uh, keeping the environmental science, community service types of trip I think are important as well. So should I transition to the other trip? So uh, we have a few trips that we wanna propose. Um, a couple of them we've done already, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on them. Uh, we are looking at sending a group of students to Spain in April of two thousand sixteen. Actually, the three trips tonight uh will be all for the same week, uh, April break, two thousand sixteen. Um, this will be, uh, if we, if it gets approved, will be our seventh trip to Spain. So our students, uh, the prerequisite of course is, uh, they need to be in our Spanish program here at the high school. Typically, they're juniors and seniors. Um, I believe the last year when we sent a group, we sent almost forty students. So Sarah Roden High and Liora Sari, two of our Spanish teachers, will be the chaperones on the trip, which will include a homestay as well. So um, I believe they have a few days in Madrid and then they'll spend the majority of the week with host families and a similar community to what we've um, been partnering for the last several years there. So it's been a nice partnership. The Dominican trip and the other two we're gonna talk about tonight are done through Education First, which is a tour group that we've used for several trips. Uh, this one uses a different company that we've used for a while. They seem to sort of really cater to our needs in Spain, so um, our chaperones will feel like that's the group we wanna stay with right now. So, uh, the cost is about three thousand dollars, I don't think they've um quite uh itemized everything, they've typically been in that range. There isn't really anything in this trip that's unusual from any of the other Spanish, uh, trips to Spain as well. So um, any questions on, on that particular trip?
I just have a quick question, Robert. How do you vet out the homestays and where they're staying, the host families?
It's the organization that facilitates the trip, they set up the partnerships um for the homestays. So, um, and that's where a lot of our comfort level comes from, so we've worked with this particular company for so long in the same community and we've had uh great success in placing our students there, so um, it's, it's kind of what we know and what we feel comfortable with.
Okay.
Robert, this has been an every other year trip the past
Correct.
couple, you, you're talking about going to every year and making the seniors only this year?
No, we do it every other year for juniors and seniors.
Okay.
Um, so uh, this April, our students are going to France.
Right.
Um, so they'll, we'll run another Span, uh, French trip in two thousand seventeen. Um, the Spanish trip runs the opposite years.
I thought in here, um, I think it said because the last trip was so large, you wanted to rein it back a bit, maybe to, to back to that magic number twenty-five, and then maybe then take that every year?
Yeah, we're
Was that what I read?
We're trying to decide if that's kind of what we're gonna do.
Okay.
So there were years where they did go
Is that the magic formula?
Yeah, there were years where they went back-to-back uh because of the interest of students. So we wanna give the juniors and seniors an opportunity to go, so if we can't, the group's too large, then we'll cut that number down and then run the group the following year for the juniors, so.
Right.
It's, we don't really, we won't know the number until obviously we put it out to families.
Yeah.
So there's a potential for doing it back-to-back years, we'll just have to see what the interest is.
Now, if you don't get your twenty-five from upperclassmen, do you open it to the freshmen, sophomores?
We, we would, uh, we always have.
Oh, alright, okay, yeah.
It's a very popular trip, so I would expect that, uh, we probably will. Uh, Spanish is the sections that we have the most of here at the high school, more students take Spanish than any other of our languages, so.
Okay.
I would expect that we will fill that up.
And I like how for the Italy trip, the Rome trip, it's, it's both the Latin students and the art students. I like that interdisciplinary approach
Yeah.
to, to the trip.
Yeah, Meg will talk a little bit more about that trip, yeah, it's, it's a very different trip.
Okay, cool.
Um, do you want me to go into the next two trips, or how do you wanna, okay? I don't know if you want to vote on
Vote all.
Okay, um, so I am going to, actually, I've got, I've got a couple of these for you. So both the trip to China, um The other three trips we're proposing, um, one is, I'll talk about the trip to China, so um, this would be our third student trip now to China. Uh, we've had a number of teachers and administrators, myself included, who have gone to China over the past several years. This will be our third student trip, so um, this was another language based trip that will um, uh, will be open to students taking Mandarin at the high school. Our Mandarin numbers are a little bit lower than our Spanish numbers, so we'll give priority to both seniors and juniors, but there's a potential, I think, for underclassmen to go as well. Um, this itinerary is very similar to what we did two years ago, we took the jazz band, um, which includes stops in Beijing and then in Bamboo, which is our partner school. Uh, that will include a homestay as well. I've been in contact with the administrators down there in Bamboo, Principal Ri, and they're very excited to have us. Um, and Bamboo is about four hundred miles west of Shanghai, so the eleven-day trip, ten-day trip will end in Shanghai as well. Again, for this particular trip, it's um, it serves a lot of purposes. Uh, as you know, we hosted students from Bamboo, uh, just this past fall. Uh, we are in year seven of a partnership with a community there and it's been uh very, um, very enriching for us and them as well. So um, this not only allows our, gives our students the opportunity to experience um the culture in China, but also allows us to stay connected with our partner school, and the homestay is a big part of it. They'll, um, in Shanghai and Beijing, they'll stay in hotels, and um, in um, in Bamboo, they'll actually stay with, with families. So, um, Heather Mandosa, uh, our assistant principal is, is very excited, she's gonna be going on the trip, she's gonna be heading the trip. Bing Li Zhang, who's our Mandarin teacher, will be going again um as well, and we'll have potentially another chaperone, depending on the numbers. I didn't mention, I think I'm going to Spain, so that's, that's my trip in two thousand sixteen. So EF has put together a nice packet for us, um, it includes a very detailed itinerary. It's close to being finished, I've got a couple of things I wanna um look at with them in terms of some of the afternoons that uh we're gonna be spending in China. Uh, the cost includes obviously uh round-trip airfare, transportation, uh, which includes a high-speed train system that they have uh in China, uh, and food. So um, it's sort of a one-cost, covers everything, and that's I think thirty-two, thirty-four hundred dollars, which is very typical of what our students have paid when we've gone to China. And I think I'm gonna turn it over to Meg, uh, so the other trip is a new trip, and this is one that a lot of people are excited about. Uh, it's a trip to Florence and Rome, and I'm not certain, but this may be the first interdisciplinary trip we've done here. Anna Law, who's actually out on maternity right now, maternity leave, is our Latin teacher, and Meg teaches art. And they are gonna combine those two disciplines to uh experience the culture and art um in Rome, in Italy, in two thousand sixteen. So, um, they've done a lot of work on this, uh, we started talking about this about two years ago. And um, we just wanted to make sure we were um crafting it the right way, and, and I'm very proud of what Meg and Anna have done in preparation for this trip. So I'm gonna turn it over to Meg and she's gonna talk a little bit about um this trip, uh, and this will be, as far as I know, the first time we've gone to um, to Italy here at the high school, so. All yours.
Okay, thank you very much for having me this evening. I will be brief, um, because I feel like the students that just traveled to the, to the Dominican were um the best possible representation of how important experiential learning is. Um, so Anna Law and myself um have arranged this trip or um worked with Education First EF Tours to schedule a ten-day trip, um, that goes from Rome to Florence to Pompeii and the island of Capri, um, off the coast of Italy. Um, so we're calling this the Classics Trips, mainly because um we're excited about the students engaging with antiquity and understanding how that relates to a contemporary society or our contemporary society. Um, so similar to the other language trips, um, we're opening this up to juniors and seniors for um April twenty sixteen. Um, and that would include um Anna's Latin two, three and four classes. Um, and I'm excited to say that we are um introducing an AP Art History course next year, um, as well as we have an AP Studio Art course and Art Major Two, which is another um year-long course. So it's exciting for me because all of the works that they're going to be studying, um, they're gonna actually be able to engage with. And it's such a difference to read something in a book or see it in Google Images than to experience that tactile painting or sculpture and, and be able to relate to it in person.
Do they need to be both in art and Latin, or is it
No, it's either or. So because naturally as a language, um, it's, isn't the current language? Surprise. They're, uh, the Latin students really, it's a way for them to be able to see classical roots and to understand, um, certainly, you know, the Italian language and where, how the Roman civilization has shaped um current Italy. And many of the things, as you know, because it's an interdisciplinary trip, um, Latin and the arts have in common in terms of architecture and uh culture. So again, they're gonna be doing that exper, experiential learning with language, arts and culture. From my work with the EF representatives, I've realized that um they've really put together a very comprehensive package and everything is um detailed and planned out in the best um case scenario for the students and in their safety. So it would be running the same time as Spain, um, and uh the China trip. Uh, so in some ways, they will be competing, but you know, we have students that are interested in uh different fields of study, so I just think that this is a nice option. Um, and certainly we'll be doing an informational session that goes into detail on the most updated costs. We do have a current cost that's on par with um the Spanish trip. However, the difference is, we wouldn't be doing any homestays, um, instead, they would be hotel stays as we travel from city to city um on a private charter bus. So I think that the difference is a little bit in terms of the way we're going to be observing and absorbing the culture isn't going to be from the direct interaction with uh families, but rather, you know, from doing this multi-city tour. And then I have a link to the, to the EF page, but um, just in the interest of time, I'm gonna close it up. But before I do, does anybody know the artists that I've included in the
Da Vinci.
Yep, one of the great masters, Leonardo da Vinci. Um, so there's also an exhibit at the MFA that's currently going on with his work, so it's a really nice way to link what students are learning in the classroom and here in Boston, they're able to see these works and then relate it back to um, you know, the city of inception. Questions?
Yeah, is, so is this a custom tour or one of their catalog tours?
Um, it is a custom tour in a way. Their catalog tour is for Florence and Rome, um, and we're doing an additional add-on so that um we can go to Pompeii because we've felt certainly that that was relevant to all the students, um, but in particular, Anna was interested in doing that for the Latin students. Um, and then Capri was included with the, with the Pompeii, it was like the bonus.
So are you traveling with other schools, or you guys gonna have your own tour guide, the whole
Yep, so for a private tour, um, we need to enroll uh forty students.
Yeah.
So we're hoping to, and I mean, I'm feeling like, my god, we could have three private tours with the amount of students that are interested. But at least forty for the private, otherwise it becomes semi-private, um, meaning that they group us with other schools.
I used to work in educational travel for many years, so. I know the ins and outs. Um, so did you compare other companies, because I know you, you've used EF for the other trips, but have you used EF for Europe?
We did compare and um EF was the most cost-effective, we found.
They're the cheapest.
Um, and also preparedness, it was unbelievable, you know, the package and how they have everything aligned um for, again, the students' best interests and safety, but also for uh, you know, what it is that we wanna see and experience. So they're doing hands-on demonstrations as well as, you know, being able to go to um these institutions, these great institutions. great institutions, um, and guided tours, so.
Okay.
We found that it was just the most bang for the buck.
We had a great experience with EF, uh, the, the trip that our students were taken to Dominican, so they were, um, delayed leaving in Boston, and, um, they handled all the arrangements from getting a coach bus to taking the kids down to JFK to fly out of New York.
Yes, yeah.
Rebooking all the students at no cost, and it was more of, we're going to have the bus there, get to New York, we'll have you on, you know, we'll, we'll be all taken care of.
Good, good, good.
And we've had somewhat experience with on some of those trips, so it's been very responsible.
Super.
I took Latin in high school, just, I went on this exact trip in nineteen ninety, so.
You did?
Yeah, you're going to be terrified by the bus in Capri, but otherwise it'll be great.
But it's different, so.
Exactly.
Thanks for doing this, Meg, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So, we do need a, we need a vote to approve, uh, any trip that goes out of state, so, uh, the superintendent's recommended all three, we could vote them all, all at once there, uh, motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyways, have a great time.
Thank you.